Good morning everyone and welcome to a more meeting of the County Council being held on Wednesday, the 2nd of December 2020 at 10am. This meeting is streamed to the council's website and will be available to view for a minimum of six months. Please be aware that any footage from the meeting may be used in subsequent media broadcasts. I am councillor Katie Corrigan, Chair of the Council. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members, officers, members of the public and the media who are watching this live stream. Before I commence with the formal business of the agenda, I will quickly recap the housekeeping issues for us all to follow. For those participating in the meeting, if you could please only speak when invited to speak by myself as chair, keep your microphones on mute at all times unless invited to speak. If you wish to speak, please type RTS in the chat function. This will indicate to me that you wish to speak. Please bear in mind that all participants can see the messages in the chat function. Once invited to speak, please introduce yourself with your name and position unless you have already introduced yourself earlier in the meeting. If you have issues with connectivity, try switching off your video and use just the audio function. If connectivity issues continue, you may have to leave the meeting and rejoin to get a better signal. For those members who have the new teams update, please note that the two bar now appears in the top right of the screen rather than the bottom middle. Please follow these simple rules as it will help us run the meeting effectively as efficiently as possible. Please be patient should we encounter any issues. Thank you. Moving on to the formal business on the agenda. Item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the minutes of the meeting held on the 21st of October 2020? Councillor Hennig.
Thanks Chair, can I move to the minutes please?
Councillor Napier.
Second to minutes Chairman.
Thank you. Does the council agree the minutes is a correct record?
Agree.
Thank you. I can confirm that the minutes agreed is a correct record. Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? I will pause for a moment to allow any declarations. No declarations have been received. Thank you. That moves us on to item three, chair's announcements. Today's council meeting will be the final full council meeting of our Chief Executive Terry Collins, who is retiring at the end of the year. Terry has had a successful 43-year career in local government at the City of York, Redcar in Cleveland, Brighton, Eastleigh, Darlington and South Tyneside councils. Eleven of those years have been spent here in Durham where Terry joined the council in February 2009 as Corporate Director for Neighbourhoods, two months before the new Unitary Authority became operational. Terry has been our Chief Executive for the past five years and has racked up a number of notable achievements during his time including development of the council's culture-led regeneration programme into one of the most extensive and ambitious in the country. In turn, increasing Durham's national and international reputation as a great place to invest and visit. Increasing numbers to the county and boosting job creation and the economy. This has included Lumiere, the UK's largest light festival which attracted its 1 millionth visitor in November 2019. Terry has provided a robust financial management during years of austerity to ensure that the council could continue to provide strong frontline services and has been instrumental in the development and delivery of countywide investment programme including the Integra 61 development and the expansion of Net Park. He has also led the team responsible for bringing the Amazon facility to County Durham, which is one of the largest in the country. More recently, Terry has led the council through its response to the coronavirus pandemic. I would like to place on my record my personal appreciation to Terry for his time here as Chief Executive. The council's achievements and his leadership speaks for themselves and I'm sure all members of the council associate themselves with my remarks. I know that group leaders wish to say a few words starting with the leader of the council, Councillor Simon Hennig.
Thanks Chair and as leader of the council, obviously I'd like to give my thanks to Terry for everything that he's done for Durham County Council in the 11-plus years that Terry has been an integral part of the organisation. As you yourself just said Chair, Terry joined the council in the run-up to unitarisation in 2009 and had at that time a very challenging role of pulling together environmental services from across seven previous district councils and the previous county council. This was achieved very successfully and at some pace and it's fair to say that things have never really stopped ever since. And I can remember back in those early days as well, Terry being our first call of response when we had some bad winters, if colleagues will remember back in those years after 2009, flooding events, all sorts of things which Terry always responded to very quickly on behalf of neighbourhood services. Things have continued at a pace ever since and of course for the last five years Terry has been Chief Executive of the council. Most recently, as mentioned, Terry has led the council through its response to the COVID-19 pandemic, one of the most challenging periods that I'm sure anybody has ever had to deal with. Chair, Terry has been a fantastic asset to this council throughout his time here, as he has been, I know, to all of the other councils that he's served during his 40-plus years in local government. I'm sure I speak on behalf of everyone in wishing Terry a well-deserved and happy retirement.
Thank you, Councillor Hobgood.
Yeah, thanks Ter. Tomorrow will be the first day for most of us here that will not be seeing Terry's name as part of Durham County Council. It's been a pleasure to work with you for the last 11 years in both your roles as Director and as Chief Executive. As both Director and Chief Executive, you've always operated an open-door policy and made yourself available and approachable to all members. So on behalf of all the Liberal Democrat members past and present, we wish you a long, happy retirement and after the last few months I'd say you truly deserve it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shuttlesworth.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. Yeah, Terry's door has always been open. He has always been willing to speak to any member of the council and his open-door policy has been an asset because previous people haven't had that. But no, he's always been available, he's always been helpful and I wish him well in his retirement and for the rest of the group. Thank you.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you Chair. When I heard last week that this was going to be Terry's final council, it was the same day as the media was full of reviewing the life and times of Diego Maradona and it struck me that there were parallels between the two really. Words like fluency and agility, nimbleness were used to describe Maradona's ability to weave his way around problems and towards the goal. And I rather feel that we're about Terry really, though I think Terry's favourite ball game these days is golf rather than football, in that if you look at the challenges over the years, he's always sort of managed to navigate a safe course past the icebergs and I've always felt actually very safe with Terry at the helm of Durham County Council, so I'm genuinely sorry to see him go. But after, as has been said, 43 years in local government and with a pressing need to improve his golf handicap, the time has come for Terry to say goodbye alas. So thank you Terry for all that you've done for the council, all that you've done for the councillors and all the best for the future.
Councillor Shield.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Durham Independent Group, Terry Kai wish you our sincere thanks and appreciation for all that you've achieved in your capacity, first as Director of Neighbourhood Service and latterly as Chief Executive for the last five years. I hope that all your offices follow your diligent approach to addressing problems and issues, sometimes called challenges. I was always personally surprised and delighted when you always acknowledged any late emails saying, 'Leave it with me Alan, I'll get back to you' and you always did. We hope that you enjoy your retirement and we wish you good luck, good fortune and most importantly, good health. And in the words of Star Trek's Mr Spock, 'Live long and prosper'. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Madison.
Terry, you will be missed. Thank you for your positive and exceptional work at the helm of the County Council. This last year has been extremely difficult for all of us and you and your team have managed to plan to get us through this period of uncertainty exceptionally well despite the many pressures you must have experienced as this pandemic has developed. Notwithstanding this, you have always made time to listen and respond to local issues and concerns from all members, whatever their political persuasion. And for this, I would like to thank you on behalf of members and residents of Spennymore-Middleston and Tudor Division. All of us present today are a small number of the managers, officers, members and your many contacts who would have liked to personally wish you well in your retirement and this in itself marks the esteem in which you are held by all of us. who would have liked to personally wish you well in your retirement. And this in itself marks the esteem in which you are held by all of us.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that members. We'll go back to councillor Liz Madison.
Thank you Chair. I don't know how much of what I've said has come through, but I've actually sent Terry a copy of what I've said. So I'll just put in, in order that we can move forward, the last part of my speech. And that is to say, all of us present today are a small number of the managers, officers, members and your many contacts who would like to personally wish you well, but not able to today. And this in itself marks the esteem in which you are held by all of us. You've built up an excellent team who will carry your vision forward and you can feel proud of the contribution you have personally made to making life in County Durham better and safer for all of us. I wish you a very happy retirement. Good luck and best wishes.
Thank you. Terry, would you like to respond?
Yeah, okay. Thanks again. And then leaders, your very kind comments. What are we doing then?
Okay, thanks members for bearing with us. We'll now hand over to Terry to respond.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. Thanks for your big comments. Thanks to all the leaders for their comments. Particularly I'd like to thank all members for their help and support during my eleven years at the council. Particularly I'd like to thank Simon and our neighbour for their support, their help, their guidance. And you know, just for their general positive relationship that we've had over the years. It's been fantastic working together. And I think the council's achieved some amazing things during those eleven years. Let's thank Cabinet. I'd like to thank Audrey, John Robinson and Linda. and Linda, opposition group leaders, Richard, Amanda, John, Alan and Liz, all of our CMT colleagues, including Helen and Amanda. Such an amazing team. Surround yourself with good people. Believe it be, it's a lot easier than I think you've done with that one. I'd like to congratulate John Hewitt. I think he's a fantastic officer and equally fantastic person, great values. I think he'd be a great chief executive. Special mention to the staff who've supported me in my office during the time as chief exec in the neighbourhoods. Sam Ever, Kevin, Catherine, Cheryl, you're all really appreciated. Big thanks to our trade unions who helped the council enormously during our 11 years and always had a positive relationship with them. Big thanks to our partners and most of all our staff, our amazing staff who work at the council. Chair, before I finish, I'd like to say that I believe that the council has a strong reputation locally, regionally, nationally and internationally. I think we're stable, we're high performing across the board, we've got great staff, we've got great members serving the great people in our county. We're a confident council. Please continue the good work. It's been an incredible journey since 2009. I've loved every minute bit and I will remember my time at Durham County Council for the rest of my days and this county will always have a special place in my heart. Thanks again Chair.
Thank you. Finally, we do have a lengthy agenda this morning. Therefore, I'm seeking agreement from the council to waive standing orders to allow for the extension of meeting should go beyond two and a half hours. And if the times allow for motion, goes beyond 30 minutes. Do I have a second please?
Yes Chair, I'm councillor Ozzy Johnson, Vice Chair of Durham County Council and I second the proposal.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to agree the course of action?
Agreed.
Thank you. That moves us on to item four, Leaders' Report. Can I ask the lead of the council, councillor Simon Hennig, to present his report please?
Thank you Chair and thank you to all those who have joined us for our second remote meeting of full council. Staff across the authority continue to work incredibly hard in responding to the many challenges brought about as a result of the pandemic. And I would again like to thank everyone for their hard work and commitment. In recent weeks, our Director of Public Health, Amanda Healy and myself have continued to meet regularly with our colleagues from across the other North East councils which make up the LA seven to discuss coronavirus rates and what we can do between us to try and bring these down. On the back of these meetings, a series of rallying calls have been issued to people living across the North East by the LA seven, asking everyone to play their part in bringing down the rates and keeping each other safe. I'm pleased to report that infection rates in County Durham and across the North East have now been falling for several days. However, we learned last week that the government had decided to place the whole of the North East under the highest tier of restrictions, tier three, once the national lockdown expired, which took place earlier today. At the beginning of November, as England entered the lockdown, we found ourselves again having to close libraries and leisure centres, although thankfully, we're now able to look at reopening some of these services as we return to a tiered system. Since the start of the pandemic, our priority has been to maintain key services. And thanks to the safety measures now in place, we've been able to ensure that schools, household waste, recycling centres, playgrounds, parks and allotments have remained open during the second national lockdown. At the same time as we entered lockdown, we wrote to those clusters clinically extremely vulnerable to advise them of the support available to them through our Community Durham Together Community Hub and to ensure they were aware of the latest government guidance. We've also in recent days acted to ensure our residents have increased access to coronavirus testing by opening a new facility in the upper county hall car park. Testing at the site is available seven days a week from 8am to 8pm and this will continue for at least the next three months. And we've also launched our COVID Community Champions Scheme through which members of the public are helping us to pass on important information and guidance needed to keep communities safe. We're still very keen to add more community champions and anyone interested can find out more on our website. Our teams continue to work hard to support businesses affected by the latest local and national coronavirus restrictions. Staff are busy contacting those that may be eligible for funding to highlight the support available and to process the government's local restriction support grants as soon as possible. When the House of Commons voted against extending the National School Meals Scheme to cover school holiday periods in October, we stepped in to provide vital support to those families most in need. Parents and carers whose children were eligible for means tested free school meals were able to apply for one fifteen pound voucher to buy food and drink supplies. The scheme received more than 4,000 applications within hours of its launch. An overall a total of £156,270 was given to families, money which was used to provide meals for 10,418 children across County Durham. Can I thank Durham County Council Cabinet colleagues and officers for implementing this vital scheme at very short notice? Chair, last week saw the government's spending review. While we of course welcome any new funding announcements such as the first details of the government's Shared Prosperity Fund, we still await the precise implications and allocations for County Durham. And we will of course report these to Cabinet and council when they become clear. In terms of the Shared Prosperity Fund, it is essential that the previous regional funding received by County Durham and the North East is not reduced and that decisions on how the fund is spent should be made locally, not in Whitehall. One less positive aspect of the spending review statement was the payfrees announced for many public sector workers who have performed heroically over recent months during the coronavirus pandemic. Like many other groups hit hard but not fully compensated during the pandemic, they deserve much better from this government. In other news, the council has been named as one of the top employers in the country for our apprenticeship opportunities. We were awarded a place in the government's top 100 apprenticeships employers list, joining 10 other local authorities who have made the list. We currently have 259 apprentices working in a wide range of roles across our services and schools, including catering, accounting, construction and business administration. New research shows that we have one of the best climate change action plans for addressing food emissions. Sustain analysed 92 council plans and found that only 13, including Durham's, were adequate, given the scale of the crisis and the significant footprint from our food system. As part of our Climate Emergency Response Plan, we've been rolling out energy efficiency measures in buildings and public places across the county. This includes replacing bulbs with LED lighting in more than 400 bus shelters, newly renovated subways and some schools. Last month, we launched our new Find and Fix Scheme as part of our £31 million investment in frontline services agreed by the county council's budget earlier this year. The project builds on our routine green maintenance and street cleaning work and sees us work alongside our communities to address cleanliness concerns spotted by the teams or residents as soon as possible. More than 600 people from across County Durham attended virtual events organised by our 14 area action partnerships to thank the many local groups, individuals and businesses who supported their communities during the pandemic. The Better For Everyone Sessions were also a chance for residents to have their say on longer term regeneration projects such as our Towns and Villages Programme. I'm very pleased to have spoken at all 14 online events and I would want to thank everyone involved in the running of those events and everyone who participated. Sadly, the pandemic meant many remembrance Sunday services, parades and wreath laying ceremonies could not take place this year. To allow people to commemorate this important occasion in a safe and meaningful way, we staged a series of online activities as well as lighting up six landmarks in red as a tribute to the fallen. We also worked with the Durham Light Infantry Collection to produce a learning programme for schools. The activities were well received and we would like to thank residents again for keeping our communities safe by commemorating us home. Our highways team has completed a new link road between Rennie's Lane and Damson Way. This work was carried out to support an increase in vehicles using the A181, Dragon Lane and Sunderland Road, following recent developments in the area, including Durham City Retail Park and the opening of The Range and Lidl. Work continues on New Elvet Bridge in the city centre with the central section of the structure having now been raised. This is a major milestone in the project and we're pleased that the decklift has been successful. Work has also now begun to transform Festival Walk in Spennymore from an outdated shopping precinct into a new free to use town centre car park and retail area. We've invested £600,000 into the project as part of ongoing regeneration work across the county. We teamed up with East Durham College to deliver heritage construction training courses as part of the 2.25 million CM Townscape Heritage Project. The first courses took place before the lockdown last month and will be repeated in years two and three of the project. And finally Chair, Lumiere, the UK's largest and most successful light festival, will return to County Durham next year, offering a welcome sign of brighter times ahead. The festival which boosted the county's economy by eleven and a half million in 2019 will take place from Thursday the 18th to Sunday the 21st of November 2021. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. If members have any questions on the report, can you indicate in the chat function? Councillor Patterson?
Thanks Chairman. Chairman, can I first of all congratulate Terry on his retirement and wish him well. Chairman, I'd like to ask the leader about the government's announcements to freeze public sector pay for some parts of the public sector. This announcement's going to affect all of those in the public sector workers, those who we clap for on the doorstep back in lockdown. And it also affects our own staff. If you recall last month, we passed a motion unanimously, in fact, thanking all of our staff for their heroic efforts. And all public sector workers deserve a pay rise, probably more now than ever. So in light of the government's announcements, can the leader give any indication on how we might implement the government's pre-freece cap at 24,000 without causing significant issues with our employees' pay scales? Thanks Chairman.
Councillor Hennig, would you like to respond?
Thank you for that question, Councillor Patterson. And there are undoubtedly going to be issues with implementing the payfrees on our pay scales. I understand that officers are working already with NERIO, so that's a regional body, and the wider region on how this issue will need to be addressed. And of course, the final pay settlement is subject to national negotiations through the local government association with the recognised trade unions. So certainly it's something that we need to keep a very close eye on and that we'll, if necessary, need to report back on. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Any more members have any more questions? I'll pause to allow any requests. Can I confirm that the council notes the leaders' report?
Agreed.
That moves us on to item five, Questions from the Public. No public questions have been submitted for today's meeting. Item six, Petitions from the Public. No petitions have been received. Item seven, Report from the Cabinet. Can I ask the lead of the council, councillor Simon Hennig, to present his report please?
Chair, the report in front of members this morning provides a summary of items considered by the cabinet at its meetings held in October and November 2020. These covered a wide range of issues as detailed on pages 21 to 49 of today's agenda papers. I'm very happy to table the reports.
Thank you. No questions have been submitted. Can I confirm that the council notes the cabinet report?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Item eight, Midyear Review Report on Treasury Management for the period to the 30th of September 2020. Can I invite John Hewitt, Corporate Director of Resources, to present the report please?
Yes, thank you Chair and good morning members. This report sets out the council's half year position on its borrowing and treasury activity for financial year 2020-21, so the current financial year. In summary, the council held £348 million worth of borrowing and had £263 million in investments as at the half year point. No additional borrowing has been undertaken in the first six months of this year as cash balances were sufficient to fund outflows during that six month period. The treasury position is set out from paragraph 13 of the report and borrowing activity is set out from paragraph 15 showing our loan details. Details of investment activity are set out from paragraph 20 with a breakdown set out in the table at paragraph 21. I can confirm that all borrowing and treasury activity is aligned with our treasury management strategy, which is agreed by council as part of the budget process. We are proposing in this report in paragraph 23 to increase the limits for our money market funds by £25 million to £125 million and by £5 million to £25 million for any single exposure. This will provide us with further flexibility to place the council's cash during times of depressed interest rates. From paragraph 24, we're setting out that the council has complied with all of the treasury management indicators that were set out in the treasury management strategy that was agreed by full council in February of this year of 2020. The recommendations are set out in paragraph six Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a move to the report please?
Thank you Chairman. Morning everyone. I'm Alan Neary, I'm the Deputy Leader of the council. I also have the finance portfolio.